Good. Looks like we've got everybody. Miss Julie stepped away from her desk. Judy, do we have everybody? That you can tell?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then now I see Julie, okay. All right, with 6:01, I would like to go ahead and call this regular meeting in the Manitou Springs City Council for July 21st, 2020 to order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. So Judy, if you could display the American flag, we'll all stand. Okay, so if you'll join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Yeah. Actually, I didn't hear anybody else. I don't know if there's a technical problem?
Most of us are muted.
Okay.
I was muted. I think I was remuted, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so there's a rational explanation, good. Let's start the evening with a rational explanation. Okay, so if the city clerk would now please call the roll.
Yes, councilors, Judith Chandler.
Present.
John Shado.
Here.
Julie Wolf. Julie Wolf. Susan Walbrook.
Here.
E. Bremner.
Here.
Mayor Proton Nancy Fortune.
Present.
Mayor Graham.
Here.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think you all have a copy of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agendas presented.
Wait a second. Like councillor Chandler raised her hand. Judith, you're muted. I take that as a second, though.
Sorry, it was my understanding we were going to pull the parking presentation for tonight. Is that true?
Right, yeah, currently the agenda has that pulled.
I see, okay, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at a previous agenda, I'm sorry, so yes.
I understand.
I second that.
Okay, good, thank you, okay. Any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, next item, item E, we public comment on non-agenda items. And I would mention for anyone in the audience that we do have two public hearings tonight, one on an historic preservation ordinance and the other on an extended hours for marijuana centers ordinance, so. Judy, do we have anyone wishing to speak for non-agenda items?
Yes, mayor, we have two hands at this time raised. And just remind those, before they speak, they state their name and their address for the record. And the first person I will bring over is Rebecca Rattery.
Okay, and if I might mention, per our custom, we ask that the comments be no longer than three minutes. Again, state your name and address, please. And we typically don't respond back to comments that are made during the public comment section.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Rattery. I live at 108 Fairview, and I'm one of the owners of the Iron Springs Chateau. To date, the ownership of the Iron Springs Chateau has come before you, literally begging for you to reopen the incline each month since you closed it. We beg you once again to please open the incline. I recognize that you've sent a memorandum of understanding to Colorado Springs and are awaiting their response. However, the fact remains that this city council closed the incline and therefore you have the authority and power to open it again. The continued waiting on your political maneuvering with Colorado Springs is causing extreme distress to this particular business. It is unlikely we will be able to sustain till the end of the year without a major influx of revenue to get us through the down season. We only have four weeks left of this summer season. It may be that we don't make it to the end of the year because of this. Please, open the incline. You can and you should. It is time to start thinking of the businesses in your community, the businesses that support your infrastructure in a very significant way. The continued closure of the incline only exacerbates the detrimental financial impact that the pandemic has already caused. The Iron Springs Chateau has been a part of this community as a business in Ruxton Canyon for 140 years. Do you really want to be the reason that that legacy is lost in Manitou Springs? I remind you that your political maneuvering should not come at the cost of the businesses in your community. You have the authority to open the incline. Please, please do so. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Our next hand that's raised is Dave Wolverton.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Yeah, good evening, council. I just want to comment quickly, I know you've got.
Mr. Wolverton, we need your address.
I'm sorry, Dave Wolverton, I reside at 213 Pilot Knob. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of myself in regards to the council bill 0720, the Mineral Springs and Hydrologic Analysis of the Manitou Springs Aquifer Contract with USGS. I've written a number of comments since the beginning of the year, both with city administration staff, with Roy Chaney. As recent as June 9th, to you, Mr. Mayor, I sent you an email outlining some factors that I find problematic with that contract. And I've gotten no response from that inquiry. That was prior to the June 9th presentation that USGS made to council. I've tried to stop this since the beginning of the year. I don't think it's on the right track. I don't think it's money being spent wisely, and I don't think it's going to get us to the end goal. And I think if you don't want to take my word for it, I've been pretty forthright with other council members and staff that I can provide names and numbers of other contractors and professionals that have been involved in this process since 2004. That would be more than happy to share their views on this as well, so. I just wanted to go on the record tonight as objecting to this this contract and in regards to, I think it's not consistent with the goals that were set prior to this with the phases one and two with John Shoemakers Group and a prior phase with Bishop Brogdon and Associates out of Denver. And that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Judy, do we have anyone else?
At this time, there are no other hands raised, and I had no one else contact me to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item F, then, the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. First is the approval of our June 2nd, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Second item is the appointment of Gloria Latimer as an alternate member of the city planning commission. Okay, do we have?
I move that we approve the consent calendar, F, items one and two as written. Second.
All in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. Aye? Any nays? No nays. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. We'll move on to item G1, that's a hearing. This is the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 0520, An Ordnance of the City of Manitou Springs, Colorado, Repealing and Reenacting Chapter 17.04 of the Manitou Springs Municipal Code Concerning Historic Preservation. And we have, of course, we heard this two weeks ago on first reading. I believe Christine is going to present on it now. And Christine, I think we've heard a number of the details, but please refresh us as you feel necessary and bring us up to date with any recent concerns. Christine, you have the floor?
Okay, absolutely. Good evening. My name is Christine Lowenberg, Planning Director for the City of Manitou Springs. Yes, as you mentioned, tonight is the second reading regarding the repealing and reenacting of chapter 1704 regarding the historic preservation matters in the city. Senior Planner Michelle Anthony has provided leadership in this endeavor and is not able to participate in tonight's hearing. And I'll be representing her in the matter. There has been, as you know, significant public interest and input received about the development of this ordinance, including HPC meetings in April, August, and October of 2019. The commission did recommend adoption in January of 2020 this year. Additional input was gathered in city council work sessions and direct engagement with stakeholders with a high level of interest in these matters. I don't know what additional interest we may see tonight in our public hearing, but it goes without saying that this is important to note. The first reading of this ordinance was July 7th, 2020, before this body, the motion carried to approve the first reading. Tonight is a public hearing for this matter. I want to note that a specific matter of impact will be the need for the planning department to designate a minimum of $3,000 in consulting services in the 2021 budget to ensure the city can provide a preservation specialist who is qualified to determine contributing or non-contributing status. It is anticipated this equals two consultations per year. With that, I'm available to respond to any questions or concerns that this body or the public may have regarding this ordinance.
Have questions for Christine before we open the public hearing? Okay, good. We'll go ahead and I will declare the public hearing open. Any members of the public who would like to speak to this may do so now through the city clerk.
I'm waiting to see if any hands go up, and so far, we have hands going up.
Okay. This was not controversial by the time it got to us, so. We'll give them a minute. Judy, did anyone contact you about this? And we have no one, no one appears to wish to comment on this. I will therefore declare the public hearing closed at this point. And also, we can ask questions of Christine or this for discussion, or we can entertain a motion. Good. Councillor Wolf? Councillor?
I'd like to move to approve the ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion? So we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Okay, a motion, a second, any further discussion? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Great, thank you. Christine, thank you very much. Next time, we'll ask some hard questions.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Item G2, also a public hearing. This is a second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1120, An Ordnance Amending Section 5.09.170 of the Manitou Springs Municipal Code to Extend the Hours of Operation of Medical Marijuana Centers and Retail Marijuana Stores to Midnight. Okay. I believe Christine, you're going to present again on this, okay?
Yes, thank you. So as we discussed a moment ago, tonight serves as the second reading and public hearing regarding ordinance 1120 to extend the hours of operation for establishments in the marijuana industry in Manitou Springs. On May 27th, city staff were directed to begin the evaluation process of determining the feasibility of extending retail operation hours. This included site visits, evaluation of traffic patterns, crime, or safety issues, and past public input. Ultimately, an ordinance was drafted and presented for discussion at the June 27th council work session. At that time, Mayor Proton Fortune requested additional public engagement for the public hearing. The first reading of the ordinance to this body was July 7th of this month. The first reading was passed in the affirmative. Tonight is the public hearing for this matter. The Public Information Officer, City Clerk, and Planning Director crafted language notifying the public of this hearing via the city's official channels, which included Facebook and Nextdoor. This included links to the agenda and supporting material. The planning department has received some comments on this matter. About a half a dozen of which did not want names, their names stated in the public hearing, but were in support of the matter. With regard to social media, there were, as of approximately 5 o'clock this afternoon, there were four positive comments supporting the extension of hours. These folks were noted on Facebook as their location being one in Crystal Hills, one Manitou Springs, one Miramont Castle, and one Undetermined. As well, this afternoon, there was a comment that came in, which you have, this body has been, was originally in receipt of, and it was forwarded to me, and this comment did express concern about the extension of hours. So with that, I'll respond to any questions or concerns this body or the public has regarding this ordinance.
Do we have any questions for Christine at this point? I don't see any hands raised. So I guess with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing, so we will now entertain comments from the public. City clerk, do we have anyone wishing to comment?
I'm waiting to see if we have any hands go up.
Okay.
So far, I'm seeing any.
So if you're an attendee and you wish to speak to this, please, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom to let the city clerk know that you want to speak. I guess we've had. It appears that we have no one wishing to speak to this?
Still have no hands that have gone.
Okay, did we receive any, in addition to the comments that Christine talked about? Judy, did we get anything else from the public, or?
I did get one that came through after the meeting started. It looks like it got emailed out to all the council. So, and that came from Robert Todd. And he provided a fact sheet to contribute to tonight's discussion and debate on the MMJ extended hours discussion.
Okay.
So council has access to their emails, they should have that.
Okay. And we still have no one wishing to speak on this?
Still no hands are up.
Okay. In that case, I will declare the public hearing closed.
Mayor, just so you know, I do have one person who's been trying to get on. And so I've been trying to work through.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Well, in that case, why don't we let that person? Judy, if you could work with that person for a couple of minutes, that would give the rest of us a chance to look at the the email from Bob Todd if we so desire. Councillor Wolf?
Anybody who got Bob Todd's email, would you be willing to forward it to me? It's not in my inbox.
Do that.
Thank you.
I don't have it either.
Okay.
I need it also, thank you.
Okay.
Did you say you needed it?
So I just send it to the three that mentioned that they needed it.
Okay. Judy, are you having any luck with that person?
I'm not.
Okay.
Fortunately.
Okay. There are definitely challenges with Zoom. Is it possible that person could just call in on the phone and talk to us?
Just suggested he try to get through on a different device than what he's used to using.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll suggest the phone as well.
Okay, well. We'll give him a minute, a minute then.
Judy, I don't know if we can do this, but can you table that and move on to the other new items real quick while you're trying to work on them?
That would be up to the council.
Okay. If council has no objections, that's maybe a good idea. We could go ahead and get some new business knocked out. And Judy, if you'll keep a surprise of that. Is there any objection to doing that? Don't see any objection, okay, so. Let's go ahead with item H1, new business. Appointment of David Armstrong as a regular member of the city planning commission. Christine, do you want to speak to this?
Oh, I think Denise is trying to say something.
Mayor, I don't think we have someone here to speak on each one of those, so I think it's just you guys look at that, and if you have questions, then go from there.
entertain a motion so we can discuss this. Councillor Wolf?
Why is Gloria Latimer in the consent calendar and David Armstrong isn't?
That's because Gloria Latimer is requesting to be an alternate member, but for a regular member, which would be a voting member, it does go on the regular approval, the regular business.
Oh, thank you.
For that reason, we couldn't put, for instance, Mr. Armstrong, Natalie Johnson, or John Maynard on the consent calendar. They ought to be considered under new business and separately.
I just wanted to tell Gloria, if she's listening, that I'm so glad she's coming back to the planning commission. She was fabulous when she used to be a regular. I'm really glad she's come back.
Mayor Proton?
Sure, I'll go ahead and move that we approve the appointment of David Armstrong as a regular member of the city planning commission. Second.
We have a second by councillor Wolverton. Any discussion? If not, let's vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Armstrong is appointed as a regular member of the city planning commission. Mr. Armstrong, if you're out there, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I entertain a motion under new business? Because I would move that we approve under H1, H2, 3, and 4 the approval of Natalie Johnson, John Maynard, and Regina DePodova to their respective positions.
Councillor, is that acceptable protocol? I'm.
I'm going to defer to Jeff Parker.
It's up to city council if you want to take them all at once, or if you want to do them one at a time, so.
That would leave H4, H5 to be still considered.
I'll second that. I'll second Judy's motion.
But to restate that, so that I'm clear on this, we have a motion to accept items H2, appointment of Natalie Johnson to the URA, H3, appointment of John Maynard to the URA, and H4, appointment of Rena J. Padova to the HAB.
Correct.
I have the correct understanding, okay. Okay. All in favor of, in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Mr. Bremner, did you raise your hand, or? I'm sorry, okay, so, okay, it's unanimous, okay, thank you. All right, well, that was quick. All right, so, next item, item H5.
Mayor, could I just say something?
Yes.
If any of those three are present, and I'm quite confident that Ms. Johnson is, that just like Mr. Armstrong stepping up and being on a boarder commission, I think it's very important that we acknowledge and recognize and express our gratitude for these individuals, and I don't know if any of them have anything that they'd like to say to council, but I always think that this is a good opportunity to welcome them to the various boards and commissions.
That's a good point. Judy, can you, we'll see if any of them raise their hand if they'd like to make a comment, so.
I do see two of them on the list. Oh, we just had one put their hand up, let's see who that is. Natalie.
Natalie, okay, so if we bring her over, please?
Sure.
Judy, I also just got an email on someone that can't get in, so I forwarded it to you.
Thank you.
All right, can you, you can all hear me? Can you hear me? I don't have anything to say, but I'm just glad that I can put three years of attending URA meetings to good use. So that's kind of, I just feel like I've put in the time, I'm aware of how they work and operate and understand tax increment financing and just feel like I'm a fit, so I'm excited, thank you.
Thank you, Natalie.
Sorry.
Is in the audience?
I did. Getting out of your back, over. So we have another person who was interested in joining us, and they're having a hard time getting into the meeting. And I think it's regarding the marijuana issue.
I think it is, too. I'll ask if that's what they want to do.
I'm sending the phone link right now. I haven't gotten a response back from the first person that I was working with to know if he's still trying, or I just haven't gotten any responses, and he hasn't shown up on the attendee side.
Councillor Wolf?
I'd like to propose that the people having difficulty just pick up their phone and call us.
I have sent both of them the phone link, so that's easier for them to do that.
Judy, Corinne Toll has her hand raised.
I see that.
Okay.
I just don't know if, I mean, she wasn't one of the applicants, or one of the people disappointed, so.
She's the half-board chair.
Okay.
Yeah, she made the recommendation.
Mayor, would you like to hear from Corinne Toll?
Yeah, let's go ahead and recognize Corinne Toll.
Corinne, you're there, but you're on mute.
Sorry, this is the first time I've come in this way. I just wanted to let you know that Regina DePodova had every intention of attending this meeting and certainly would have spoken tonight, but her cat had a medical emergency, and she has taken her to the veterinarian. She, as you can tell by her credentials, she's a valued member and is well-connected with needy populations, and that's part of our mission in housing is to help some of these people, so that's all I have to say. She would be here if she could.
Thank you, Corinne, thanks for representing her. Appreciate that. Councillor Wolf? You're muted. You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry. I just wanted to add, thank you so much Regina, or if you could pass on to her Corinne. I'm so glad she's joined your group. She's so familiar with all of these issues and public benefits and SSI and housing and all that stuff. And she's compassionate and she's intelligent and I'm so happy she's stepping up to the plate, so I just wanted to thank her as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mayor, so I'm still looking to see if we have anybody that's calling in and, right, I haven't seen anybody calling in yet, and I don't see anybody else with their hands up. Wait a minute, what happened here? Did I lose somebody? We lost the mayor, hang on. Am I muted, everybody?
Christine, you don't have anything else to present, do you?
Well, I think I was on for the marijuana extension of hours when we returned to that. And then, and then Judy will probably bring me back again when we do the next new business item.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I just got an email that the administrator is not letting them in.
And it's not giving me the message, so I don't, I, this, I can't. I'm not getting the message to let them in. Typically, it should tell me that and it's not letting me know that.
I suggest if they're, I.
In the mayor's absence, Julie, I'll go ahead and recognize you. Go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, I suggest if these, if these people refuse to call in, that we just move on and we vote on the ordinance or that we finish the rest of the meeting and maybe move to put the ordinance at the very end of the meeting after the city administrators report or something, so we can make some progress while we're waiting. Because if they're not going to pick up their phone and call us, at a certain point, I think we should keep going.
Just, we're, we're at, we, since we started the marijuana, we have completed 19 of our 30 minutes, so we're still okay. But Jeff, I would ask you, or somebody, do you know, I believe the hearing is still open, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. We just recessed the hearing, so it's still open.
Okay, so, um, and Judy, we have no indication that we've got people, or we have an indication, but they've had a good 15 minutes to try to contact us, correct?
That's correct. I do have an attendee that has raised his hand, but it's not who I've been working with or trying to work with. And I do have a phone number here, so let me. So Charles Houghton, Houghton has his hand raised, so I'm not sure if this is regarding the marijuana.
Okay, let's bring him over quickly and is the mayor, I mean, he's showing on the participants list, but is he not able to?
Are you?
On my participant list.
Mayor, are you there?
Yeah, I think I'm here.
Oh, you're back. Sorry, sorry, Mayor.
No, that's okay. Something, something strange happened. I don't know what.
Just call me Al Haig. Go ahead.
All right, so Judy, do you, you've got this Mr. Hutton, Houghton?
Yes.
Is it? Okay, I believe he's an attorney for one of the marijuana firms, if I remember correctly. So if we could bring him in, let's, let's go back to the marijuana hearing then and check and make sure that's tough he wants to speak to.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Charles Houghton. I am the attorney for Emerald Fields. And unlike most attorneys, I'm going to give you the gift of my silence. I just wanted to let you know that I'm here. And if you have any questions or you need anything regarding Emerald Fields or, you know, we're obviously in favor of extending the hours, but I'm just on the sideline. If somebody needs something, I wanted to let you know that we're here, I'm here, and now I'll shut up and give you that gift.
Thank you. Judy, do we have anyone else?
So, um, I did have a phone number pop up. I don't, they, they don't have the ability to raise their hand. If you'd like, I can allow them to talk. I don't know if it's going to be one of the two that I gave the phone number to. So if you're, if you'd like, I can go ahead and allow them to talk and we can find out who that, who it is and if they wish to speak.
They are, and if they do want to speak to marijuana, then, yeah, let's, let's try and, let's try and make this a public hearing.
Okay, here we go.
Hello?
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 This is Marcy Morrison. I just got in.
Okay, so Marcy, we can hear you over the phone.
And I don't want to interrupt somebody else. I just got in this very second. I was unmuted, finally.
That's fine. Okay, so Marcy, in fact, this is good timing. You have the floor.
Okay, did you say someone was before me or?
No, no.
I have, no, okay, thank you. And I thank the council members for your patience. And I have something going on with my computer that would not let me in. That's all I can tell you. It's not that I had been here since 5:45 trying to get in. So let me very quickly, I'm only going to make one real point and wanted you to consider it before voting. I would like to suggest to council, after talking to some of my neighbors, that they would like to perhaps have council consider giving a particular time, for instance, a pilot, running a pilot program about the time element going to midnight and seeing what results occur from that period of time. Say three months or four months, six months, and then have council reexamine the situation. Are there more incidents? Are there less? Is there more traffic? Are you receiving more tax revenue? That could be also, obviously, that could be examined. And that is the only comment that I am offering at this time.
Very much. Judy, do we have anyone else?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading something, a chat here, so. So it looks like I don't see any other callers that are in on, just on the phone. So I know Counselor Shada was giving me the number to look for to know if it's Alan Delwiches. He was the one that was trying to get in first. But I don't see any other number except for the one that Marcy Morrison just called in on.
Well, counsel, it seems to me like we've kind of hit an impasse where we're in a difficult situation, I think, in that it's, we're trying to do a public hearing and it's, it appears pretty obvious that people are having technical problems getting in. Although they have the alternative to use the phone, which is generally someone more reliable. Counsel, we can go ahead and continue on the, I can close the public hearing and we can go on to discussion. Looking for comments back from you. Counselor Chandler?
Is it possible to move G2 to after H4 and make it, I'm sorry, H5 and make it H6? So if anybody needs to weigh in, because we still have to deal with H5. We could make that, so we could revisit that afterwards. And if we don't hear from anyone, we can entertain a motion. Prior to the city administrators' report, insert that between H5 and I, city administrators' report.
Buy us a little time in.
Right, and that would give any, Judy or anyone, any opportunity for people to weigh in and then we can revisit that and decide where we want to vote on it or table it until people can weigh in. Just a thought.
Would counsel have any objection with going ahead and making our next item, H5, the resolution on the premises? And then coming back to the marijuana hearing? I don't see any objection there, so, okay, let's go ahead and go to H5, entertain the resolution. In the meantime, I guess we'll declare a recess on the public hearing for the marijuana hearing. H5, resolution number 2720, resolution establishing a COVID-19 temporary use process for additional space for on-premises liquor licensed establishments and retail businesses. Judy, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, I'd love to. Recently, in the last few months with, with the COVID-19 pandemic, the Department of Revenue Liquor Enforcement Division has been working with some of the orders that the governor has been putting forth, trying to find ways to help businesses stay sustainable through these restrictions that they're being given on a fairly regular basis. And so they've come up with a couple of different ways to do that. So they've lifted a couple of the regulations that are normally in place and this only applies during the COVID-19 period where we're under that, those orders. And so what they're trying to do is they're really trying to make this process a lot quicker than it normally would be. And one of those is to do a temporary modification of premises. And the other one is a communal outdoor dining area. I know we've had some members of the community that have been interested in doing possibly some other, some interesting things that would involve one or more of these processes. So we, what we have is a resolution that would allow staff to get these, these applications through the approval process quicker, which would allow them to then get these, open up some space so that they can serve more people, get more people outside being served. And this, this resolution would allow us to do that as opposed to having to go through the formal process of a hearing that would go through the Liquor Licensing Authority, which is the council services app board for the city of Manatee Springs. It would allow us to expedite that process. And currently I do have two people or two businesses that have, are kind of in the queue right now waiting to, to see what happens with this resolution tonight because they're very much interested in being able to expand their ability to seat people and have some outdoor seating and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have questions for, for Judy regarding this or for Mr. Parker? Counselor, or Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just, in page one, section one, there was a reference to parks, doing this in parks. And at this point, we don't allow liquor in parks except for special events. So I was wondering what the, if we wanted to include that in there or not.
So as I know, this is definitely up to city council. If you do want to do it in parks, this resolution would suspend that prohibition on possession and consumption in parks for the licensed area only. But it's up to city council if you want to do that or not.
Yeah, I personally would not like to expand it to parks, so that's my thought on it. Thanks.
This segues into Mayor Protem's comment and that is just, I agree with her. And also, just from a liability standpoint, would the city take on any liability from any areas where any businesses would be extending into any city property?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, there's always, there's always some liability when you have activity particularly involving alcohol on your property. What would be required under this resolution is that anybody who wants to operate on city property would have to execute a revocable license agreement with the city, which would require that they agree to indemnify the city for any, any claims, any damages. And also they have certain amounts of insurance coverage that would be appropriate for using city property for those purposes. So that would provide a fair degree of coverage. There is a certain amount of governmental immunity that you have, so it would be, be fairly well-covered, but there's always additional risk.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Actually, it was first to the draw. We'll say Christine and then after that Nancy.
Sure, I just wanted to comment for just a moment about, from a planning perspective and the use of the property. We would anticipate in the course of this, for those of you who have been a part of the planning process before, you know that we would look at, at that footprint. And so Judy would be looking at the liquor part. We would still be looking at the overall footprint of that business and how it fits in relation to those next to it and still look for potential or identifiable concerns or hazards that may be specific to that property. Michelle and I had a lot of discussion about this and whether the revocable license was perfect or we needed to go a different route. It's not perfect, but I think this gets us closest to where we need to be from that planning and zoning perspective during this temporary period of time. Thank you.
Sure, I'm, first of all, I think that this is kind of an exciting opportunity and I see it potentially as being a pilot. We could use the information we garner from this as a pilot to do something more permanent potentially. So I would like to go ahead and make a motion if that's okay. So I would move that we approve resolution number 2720, a resolution establishing a COVID-19 temporary use process for additional space for on-premises liquor licensed establishments and retail businesses, amending it to exclude parks.
I would second that.
Okay, any, any discussion, Counselor Wilbrook?
Yes, I just have a question. Thank you. Was Parab given this to consider since the word parks is in it? And if Parab wasn't given that, I'd kind of like to know why. I don't know if this is a COVID issue because COVID is taking up everybody's bandwidth. But one of my objections about dealing with a lot of things during COVID is that I'm afraid we don't get enough engagement or awareness or education about things. So it kind of disturbs me a little bit that parks was put in this. And when that word park showed up, that we didn't give Parab an opportunity to give us some feedback on that. And I just am speaking up for the advisory boards. And I'm not sure how this happened, but I, it seems like it happens a little too often that we don't give voice to these advisory boards that we trust to give us some feedback on this. And I don't know what that feedback would have been, but I sit here tonight and I don't have it. So I have to make assumptions about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, as the council liaison to Parab, I, I, it was not, it did not go to Parab. However, I think, and Judy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the language was pretty much taken from state directives or resolutions or whatever the state for official format is. I do know that there was a kerfuffle a couple of years ago when there was an error made in allowing an event to be put in a park. I don't know if anyone else remembers that. It was, Megan was brand new to her job. And there was a wedding, I think, and, and they allowed liquor and it shouldn't have happened. So I know that Parab did weigh in on that. So that's why, that's why when I saw parks in the language, I alerted on it. But unfortunately, I did not read the language until this morning, so. There you have it.
Counselor Wilbrook.
Yeah, and I think that this should just be a trigger for staff, not just the liaisons in the future. I'm just trying to watch out for this. And this is one of those cases where I think. I think once we, even though that's sort of the state language, once we saw that in there, we should have given them a heads up. And even if they couldn't have a, couldn't happen before their meeting, we could have at least asked them to weigh in in a statement tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor Tim, if you could go ahead and restate your motion, or it looks like Counselor Woolbrook has a comment. So let's
Okay. I thought we had people who wanted to speak about this, and I was interested in hearing about that before we voted. Is there no one who wants to speak?
I don't see any hands being raised.
Oh, hmm. Okay. Well, then I'll ask the question. Do we have any idea which, how many businesses have asked for this, inquired about this? And I don't know whether it would be appropriate or not to ask who they are, but if it is appropriate, then I'd like to hear that. But I'd at least like to know, maybe if you could tell me how many inquiries you've had.
So this actually started with, with the Manitou Springs
Creative District.
District, thank you. And also the Chamber of Commerce and working with our businesses. And, and then I was looking to the clerks' listserv just to see what other municipalities are doing to handle this. And, and so this was really pretty much just what every, you know, what everyone else has. Just it allows, it's allowing that process to happen quickly and to expedite the process so that people can get their businesses open and get some, some money flowing back in again to make them sustainable.
Thank you. That's good. I just wanted to hear a little bit more background about it and a little more detail. Thank you.
And in answer to your question, I do have two businesses right now. One that's been submitted, that has been approved through the state already. It's just waiting on our end. And then another one that just came in this afternoon that, that wants to also do something to allow for that extra business, hopefully.
Denise?
Last, I think it was last week, I lost track, but Becca from the Creative District presented on this and this idea. And also she provided the survey results from the businesses that talked about they were wanting this, et cetera. So that was the first introduction to this to you as a council.
Thank you.
And Jeff, we've worked with, I know Judy worked with Jeff in writing this and putting it together compared to what other cities are doing, and again, the state. So that's kind of how this came together. Thank you.
Additional comments? We have a motion, a second. Mr. Parker, did you? Okay, sorry.
No, I was just unmuting in case anybody had a question. So
I'm sorry. Zoom made it look like you want to say something. I'm sorry. Back to Mayor Protem, if you could restate your motion.
Sure. I, I move that we approve resolution number 2720, resolution establishing a COVID-19 temporary use process for additional space on premises liquor licensed establishments and retail businesses, but amending it to exclude parks from the language.
And I'll, again, second that.
Hey, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good. Thank you. Okay, so we're to the city administrators report, but we haven't been able to complete the public hearing for the marijuana. Judy, what's our status? Do we have people trying to get in, or have they made contact?
No, mayor. We, no change.
Okay. Well, counsel, I guess we need to face the music and do something relative to the marijuana. Yeah, I personally, I guess I have some, some second thoughts, given the difficulty of trying to conduct a public hearing. I do think we want to give the public a serious chance to comment. The one person who did, I believe it was just one, Marcy Morrison, had suggested that we introduce a trial period and then come back to it to see how it's going. I'm wondering, and I'm just thinking off the top of my head, in light of the way things are going, if we did a pilot, and then hopefully we get to a point where we can have public meetings and get everybody, you know, back to where they can make comments, maybe that's a way out. I think that's, it's a little awkward. It's, I think, rather unprecedented, but these are strange times. We have comments? Counselor Woolbrook, I think you're first, and then
Yeah, is this the time for me to just make general comments based on feedback that I've gotten from the public as well?
I believe that, I believe that'd be acceptable under the circumstances.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make those then, because I have a list of things here that I've talked about a little bit before in the last hearing, but I'll mention again. This particular initiative was initiated by council members. The businesses did not come to us originally and say that they wanted to do this. It was suggested by council members that we ask them if they would like to do that, since the state statute allows them to be open till midnight, similar to liquor stores. This has been my sticking point with this from day one. It was also a sticking point in previous administrations when we extended the hours, that it seemed to be that we think as a council or council members that we can recommend these things because we would like to get more revenue from these recreational stores while we can, because we don't know the future. That bothers me on a number of levels, and I'm going to explain those for you now. One is where do we draw the line with this type of request? So everybody seems to be fairly comfortable saying, wow, we should let them be open more and get more revenue. But what happens when we ask the cog to run five more trains a day because we'd really like that revenue too? Or maybe we don't like our incline numbers that we may someday agree on, and we decide that that's not enough revenue for our businesses that surround the incline. It's a fairly slippery slope for me as a council member. I would have much preferred for these two businesses to come in and say, this is what we wanted. And then planning could have brought that to council and said, hey, we've gotten a request from one or two of these shops that we want to do this. And then we could have acted on it. I think that we've have, every time we do this, we use up staff time that could be used on something else. We have to pay our lawyer, Jeff, to do some work on this every time because of the issue that's there. So I'm very uncomfortable with this. I just think that, and I would even go so far as to say that if they wanted to change their hours, that maybe there should be a process in planning for that, that in, you know, basically they have to take care of how much planning time and fees it has to take up on our part. So the fact that we, as a council, initiated this, I'm not comfortable with that. I think it's also a little interesting that I've heard many impassioned pleas to close the incline because it's a public safety risk. All these people are coming to Manitou, and they're bringing potentially COVID with, and we've been limiting and wanting to close it, we want to limit it. But I drive by and I see the line from Maggie's going outside the store all the way to under the underpass, which the only reason I bring this up is why is it okay for that and not okay for others? It's just a question I have. I'm not taking a stand on this as, as an issue of marijuana. I'm just saying that from a public safety, and if, if we get a lot of, I get a lot of emails about people coming to Manitou, this is an issue that I think we have. So I think that, that it's interesting that we don't ever talk about that in public safety when it comes to this topic. I also, you know, the, the point that came up last week about, well, we voted on this and, you know, pro recreational shops won. And, you know, everybody knows after the whole match issue, that bothers me because I represent everyone in my ward, whether they voted for this or not. And I'm trying to find a balance for that. And I'm trying to hear all voices. And I will say that those people who were opposed to marijuana, upon realizing that they weren't likely to prevail in the original vote, became very activist in making some things really great for our community. One is that they made, they kind of helped craft what these shops would have as requirements for appearance, and other things that have really contributed, I think, well to our community, even though maybe they were opposed to it, and they definitely lost that vote. They still have been stepping up to try to make sure that that, those types of issues get looked at, and those benefit the whole community. So these, these opinions that I have don't represent my feeling on Amendment 64, or about marijuana in general. These are just things that concern me, this being council-directed, not brought to us by the businesses originally. They wouldn't say no to this. If I were in their shoes, I would take this and run with it. If I never used it, I would still take it because one day I may ask for it and not get it, depending on who's on council. So I think we handed them a gift to allow them to do this. I think that being open from 10:00 PM to 12:00 is something we haven't done before. We can't say that we know that there are no problems because we've never done this before. And we don't know, for example, as some of the council correspondents that we got, whether people will leave the bar and go get their marijuana, and whether or not that'll have a negative impact. Again, I'm not taking a stand on that. I'm saying that we got council correspondence about that on this issue. And I think that, you know, one's recommendation was that we do this under COVID as the emergency declaration and allow them to do this. I would suggest that if we did do that, we would code three months after the emergency declaration because, you know, whether we like to pretend that things can be normal during COVID, but they're not. So I would like to see what happens after COVID, when people are more free to move around, if we were going to do this at all. But these are the concerns that I have, and things that have crossed my mind about this, that don't necessarily match other opinions that we have about other businesses in town or public safety. And I definitely don't want to disenfranchise the people who didn't vote for this, because everybody has a voice in this community. And the people who are voicing concerns over this live in this neighborhood, and some do and don't have concerns. We heard that last week. But I think that people are just keeping a watchful eye on this. And I think that we owe our community that. And, you know, I said before that I don't think we should be having too much business, or it's hard for the community to participate in. And this has bothered me about this as well. So I would also be in favor of just tabling this for now, and coming back at a time where we can have more community input about it. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Mayor, you're mute.
I'm sorry, Counselor Chandler?
I believe Counselor Wolf had her hand up before me, and then I'll go after her.
Oh, all righty. Thank you then. Counselor Wolf?
I would be opposed to the suggestion that we have this automatically end at any particular date. Council always has the right to bring this up again and propose a modification to the ordinance if we were to pass it tonight. We don't have to have it expire like at the end of a lease. I think it's, my concern is to bring additional money to the city without hurting the city. And I don't care who brought it up. I think it's important that it's going to help the city regardless of whose idea it was. And I've heard nothing at all about public safety hazards, other than what we got. We have a city of 5,000 plus people. We got six objections, and nobody even called in tonight or anything. So I don't see a huge community backlash, fearing that we're going to suddenly have shootings and murders and rapes in the city. So I would be in favor of moving forward with the regulation as worded. Thank you.
Hey, Julie. Well, so echoing Counselor Wolf, the last time we had an opportunity to discuss this, we looked at the traffic and also the potential police issues and really weighing in on those. We didn't see any really major problems. I do, I do really appreciate what Counselor Woolbrook has, has discussed, because those are really valid issues. I think that we have so many things to think about and with regards to bringing income into the city that is a positive revenue flow with relatively negative side effects. And the fact that I think we need to remind ourselves that it looks like in November, Colorado Springs will be coming forth with a ballot issue to, for recreational marijuana, which could very much change the revenue stream here in Manitou. So where I sit here, I think that, given everything I've looked at, I would be more likely to vote for moving forward. I see, I see very few, if any, side negative, negative repercussions from doing this. And if anybody else has something that really piques my interest, that would be good. But in these two discussions, I do, I do want to point out that we did have one resident email in with his objection, but most of all, most of the feedback, 90% of the feedback that I've gotten has been positive. So I would be for moving forward with this ordinance. Thank you.
Counselor Bremner, please.
Yeah, I also am in favor of moving forward with extending the hours. If anything, you know, it's just the same hours as used for the alcohol stores. And I would be in favor of decreasing the alcohol stores to 10 o'clock before I would be against this. Because I think alcohol does more damage than marijuana. That's it.
Good. Thank you. Mayor Protem, please.
Sure. And you've heard me say this before, but I'll say it again. I, I have been very uncomfortable with the processes that, on how this came to council. I think that there have been excellent arguments on both sides. So it is, it is a tricky one. I want to reiterate my support of the stores. And I, I voted for it when it first was put up to a public vote. So it's not that I'm against retail marijuana. But I also think that we had that compact with many of the citizens back when it was first, even though it's, the hours have changed a couple times since then. But I, I just look at the culture. I don't, I don't know what it says about the culture of Manitou, if we want to expand that or not. So I will probably vote no on this. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
I think we ought to move forward. And I agree that because this is a resolution, that I think if there's any hint of any problems at all, I think we ought to immediately bring this thing back and put it back to 10 o'clock.
Good. Thank you. There's a lot of gremlins out there tonight. Okay, that woke everybody up. Okay. I guess everyone else has, has spoken on this. It looks like we have at least four votes in favor of going forward with this. I do think there's been good arguments on both sides. I, I, I'm attracted to Counselor Woolbrook's idea of having sort of a pilot program to sort of put a sunset on this. I'm a little, I'm a little hesitant, I guess, tonight. I'd, I'd like to have had a good, I think we'd all like to feel like we had a good public hearing, that people had a chance to weigh in and make their comments. So I'm, I'm a little put off by that. So a little, little more cautious. The, the idea of getting more money in right now is, there's some attraction in that. I think probably more importantly is, is our culture. I mean, just what does, just what does Manitou amount to? Well, in the comments I've gotten have been about half and half. So in my mind, it's not been, been real clear cut. I would probably be inclined to go with a, kind of a pilot program if it were, were going to be that. But I think since we have it appears four votes, at least going forward, that, that I don't know that there's any point in belaboring that. Counselor Chandler?
I don't feel that this is such an urgent matter that it can't wait till the next regular meeting if we have time to have people weigh in again, if the rest of council is amenable to this.
if we have time to have people weigh in again if the rest of council is amenable to this. Because I do agree with you that it is disconcerting to me that we didn't have public input. So I would be okay with deferring it to the next regular meeting if the rest of council would be amenable to that so we could have public input.
Counselor Shida?
I move we postpone this hearing to our August 4th meeting.
Second.
So we motion a second. All in favor of postponing the hearing until August 4th? Raise your hand, say aye. We have so we have five, all, excuse me, six. So all opposed, say nay. Motion passes six to one. Okay, so we'll continue this to August the 4th and hopefully we'll have better we'll have a better opportunity for a public hearing. Thank you all. Well, that takes us now to Agenda Item I, the City Administrator Report. Mr. Chaney?
Yes, good evening. So tomorrow the swimming pool and fitness center will open. And Ms. Howe and myself went down there today to test out how they're going to bring people in. And I was real impressed with their setup. And so we're excited to see how that goes over the next few days. On the parking logic system that is shipping out tomorrow, again, a lot of delays from Canada into the US due to COVID. So we're about five day delivery. You should have it next week and start installing the parking logics program. And we are looking at getting a couple of crosswalk signals, one for Crystal Hills at that crosswalk area and also one we were going to test out at Patsy's. And our understanding that it can be also set up so that the lights turn off at a certain part at night so they're not flashing late at night. So and then on Serpentine, we have a lot of signs there for fire zones. We're going to remove some and paint red lines so that we get a little bit of the sign pollution out of there. And and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Howe?
Okay, a couple of quick things. As you know, I sent out an email and we've talked or I think it was in the press release that City Hall hours of operations now is nine to four every day and we're closed from 12:00 to 12:30 for lunch. So that has been changed. I just got a report for our parking. And over the last couple of weeks, our parking has been at 75% occupancy. So when the downtown is looking very busy, but it doesn't appear to be as busy as what it's been in the past by our parking report. We're working on a communication plan for the masks and we'll be getting that out to you hopefully tomorrow or the next day. We're working with the chamber in the creative district to get that messaging out. I did Elizabeth from the school district just reached out to me and had some questions regarding what CD-PhE requires. She's following the CD-PhE and the CDE guidance. And they're just a little bit different for kids in school. So I'm going to be talking to her over this next week and seeing what we can do. I'm working with Jeff on that and then we'll keep you informed. It's regarding mask and those things for the school district. So I'll be working on that. And I will keep you informed as we go forward. It looks like it's just a little bit of regarding exercise and playing sports. So I'll be going into detail and following up on that. Let's see, seeing if there's anything else that I forgot to mention. I think that's all. Been working a lot on the mask ordinance and COVID-19 and making sure that staff is safe and that we're following all the protocols.
Next item J, future agendas, discussion of future agenda items. I think we've got several pending that will be coming up at some point here. Counselor Wolf? Julie, I can't hear you. You don't appear to be muted, but still, Julie, I don't think anyone can hear you. Okay, now it's, okay, now you're off mute. But we can't hear you. Tell you what, Julie, you want to, maybe you want to grab your phone and meanwhile we'll go around and see what else. Okay, so if you go ahead and call in, we'll be, we'll go ahead and proceed on. Any any recommendations for future agenda items? Counselor Wobrik?
Yes, can you review what's, you said you had quite a few on the list. Could you just quickly go over those in minor detail?
I will try to do it off the top of my head. I don't have, it's somewhere down in the, well, a couple of things. We did talk a little bit about bonds last week, so that bonding was was an item. Food assessment, we talked about that. We actually talked about masks. I guess we've covered most of that stuff. It seems like there was something that had to do with finances, but it seemed to my mind as we were coming up on the budget that we could defer that till a more appropriate time. So yeah, I would have to go look for it. Sorry.
Bon, can I, I have a couple of them. Mayor, if you want me to add. We, it was the bond issue which we covered last week, the homeless camps which we've been, we provided you information on that, the food assessment which we've taken care of that. You talked about bringing back the code of conduct for a future item and and then we did the proclamation for Black Lives Matter. So that was at the council meeting. I don't remember. I don't have the date. But those were all the agenda items that were brought up at that time.
It seems like that was like June 16th. There was quite a bit that came up there. We have actually redressed a number of those. So good.
Except for the one thing that we haven't addressed is the PPACG and the Air Quality Technical Committee and needing on that. So I don't know if that's an agenda item or we just need to work that. But that's the one item I have seen that we have not addressed.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Julie, have you you tried, you're going to write something down. Okay. Okay, you're calling. Okay. All right. Okay, so we'll stand by. We'll wait to hear from Julie. Are you trying to call the city clerk or Julie, we, it's showing you as muted and of course we can't hear you. Now you're off mute.
There she is.
Julie, do you have?
She just popped on. Let me grab, grab, put her on the Okay.
Can you hear me now? Oh, my goodness.
Sorry about that. Yeah, turn the volume off on your laptop.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to see if, I'd like to talk about whether it makes sense for us to fund the shuttle that goes to the incline. And I don't know that that was anything we discussed as part of the executive session proposal to make to Colorado Springs. So I guess that's just a separate issue and I'd like to have that on the agenda.
Question of the cost of the operation of the shuttle relative to the incline. Okay, all righty. Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
No, not the cost of the shuttle related to the incline. That's not what I meant to say. What I meant to say is I want to talk about whether we should fund the shuttle that goes up to the that it goes up to the top of Roxton. Can we just have that on the agenda? It's not like a relatively thing. And I don't know what's happening with it. So if Denise says, oh, we're already under contract for the next 30 years and we can't get out of it, then I guess there won't, there'll be a very short discussion. But I don't know what's happening with that contract. So I'd like that to be on agenda, you know, ASAP. Thank you. That's all I have.
I believe that covers discussion of future agendas. Receiver Act on council correspondence. Counselor Wobrik?
Before we move on, I mean, I don't understand this process that we just did. So there's a request on the table about putting the incline, whether or not we fund the incline shuttle. I would assume that that's a decision that either you make as the mayor, which the charter allows, or we vote on that. And I haven't heard from Denise, but and I also don't know what will come out of incline discussions and how critical that in that shuttle is to the plan we have. So to me, I would say this is going to be covered when we continue to discuss incline management. But it sounds like there's a request on the table for council to decide whether or not we need that shuttle independent of incline discussions. So I, and I'm sort of two questions, the process of getting something on an agenda. And I thought this was covered in our agreements that we're trying to come to with Colorado Springs about the incline. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you for the clarification. You're right. Yes, I'm a little mentally disheveled over the Zoom stuff. It would seem that that would be part of our discussions relative to the incline. And that would be automatically included as a future topic. And if we would want to discuss it separately, we should take a vote to see if at least four people want to put it on the agenda. But it seems like it's pretty well implied, given the fact that it's it's been pretty central to the to the incline. So Judith, I think you had a question?
Well, I only raise my hand with regards to shuttle service because the shuttle that stops at Fields Park on El Paso typically stops service for the winter season at the end of September. And I know several residents who rely on that shuttle to get into town. So if we were going to have an agenda item regarding shuttle service in general, I would like to bring that up. And I would like to tie that into any discussions that anyone has about paying for parking. So because I've been told historically that we can't afford that shuttle to take residents on our end of town into town. So if we are going to have that discussion, I would like it to include the metro shuttle that stops at Fields Park. While I have you, just just from the council correspondence, I did not mean to minimize the outstanding candidates that have stepped up to the plate to be on our various boards, including David Armstrong, the Planning Committee, Natalie Johnson, and also John Maynard URA, and also Regina DePodova, a regular member of the Housing Advisory Board. I just want to say thank you. Your resumes are sterling, your letters of recommendation and your letters of intent are amazing. And I just feel so fortunate to have people like you step up to the plate to serve on our committees. I also want to say something about the Parks and Recreation Director position. I'm so excited to hear that we have a Parks and Recreation Department and to thank Lynn Johnson for stepping up to the plate to be the director, moving over from Public Works. And lastly, I want to say something about the email that we all received from Ms. Minsick, Dr. Minsick regarding the marathon. You know that she she mimics my concerns about the marathon right now, given COVID. So I just want to put that out there. I want us to have a marathon. I am profoundly concerned about what that entails. And I would like some more information because I heard on the sly and I don't have really good information that that we don't have really good numbers on who's registered and who's from out of state, who's from where and how we're going to manage that. So I'd like some more information on how we're going to pull off the Pike's Peak Marathon in August, given the pandemic. And I would ask you, Mayor, to give us some leadership in that direction. Thank you. That's all I've got.
And I'm afraid maybe I let the the Agenda Item J, Future Agenda Item bleed over into Council Correspondence.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. That's all right. We'll get this all sorted out. I think Counselor Wobrik made a good point there. I had we had brought forward the idea of discussing the incline shuttle. And it seems to me that as we go forward with the incline, that'll be one of the details that we will have to discuss. Mr. Chaney, does that appear to be a valid assumption? That the it's in conjunction with the incline? Okay, so we would be coming back to the incline shuttle idea as we discuss the incline. Does that, does that seem reasonable, Julie?
Well, I never heard Karen Paulus say boo hoo about the incline. About, I mean, about the shuttle, either when she gave her presentation to us or anything I've read in the media. She never seemed terribly concerned about whether that was included or not. She probably knows that people who can hike the incline can also go walk up a hill. So I don't know that it's necessarily part and parcel to our negotiations on the incline. But if I can't get enough votes to have this on the agenda, then I guess it'll not be discussed on the agenda. But I haven't heard anything from Karen that that's like, or Mayor Southers or anyone else, that that's a huge deal to them. But then, so I would still like to see if we can put this on the agenda. And if I, and I would be happy to consider it like a friendly amendment to take Judith Chandler's suggestion and not just talk about that one particular shuttle, but talk about shuttle service and the costs for same generally. I don't want to just mush that, squeeze that into this budget decision because I'm waiting for someone to say, whenever I bring up anything about money, it's like, oh, we'll discuss it when we do the agenda for the budget. But then, you know, we never have time to talk or discuss because then it's always rushed. So it's, I don't want to wait until the agenda is present, I mean, until the budget is presented to us for the, at the end of the summer. I think it's an important issue for us to discuss more recently. So in the next, you know, one or two meetings, I think would be great if possible. So I would like to suggest that we have a meeting that we include in one of our meetings coming up here that we, and it can be a work session, doesn't have to be a meeting, that we discuss the situation with the shuttle and our contracts on the shuttle.
Thank you. Have we, Denise, can you address if we've gotten via email the details of the shuttle in terms of the expiration, when the contract is renegotiated?
Right, I know we can, Maria, do you want to give us those details? Because I can't remember that on that shuttle. You just looked at it. Isn't it like 30 days note? I can't, can we just get that information out to you? I don't want to say something that's inaccurate and I'd like to be able to write off. And Maria, I don't know if you do.
I'm okay with you. I'm just asking for that information to come out to us at your convenience so that everybody can understand it. I don't know if this is appropriate to say, but we've been funding this shuttle. And I don't know in our negotiations if we've asked Colorado Springs to fund that or not. And nobody has to answer that tonight. And the assertion that nobody wants the incline shuttle, I find objectionable. Although I suppose that's why Counselor Wolf wants to put it on an agenda so we can have that that discussion. And I'm for that, but I for one use the shuttle to do the incline when the incline was open. And I don't want to walk from my house. That's my own personal opinion. I think it's an opinion shared by others. I think it's an opinion shared by others and I I think it would behoove us to get this information from Denise and Roy. It would behoove us to go through further incline negotiations before we pick a date for this. And then certainly those things will lead us into budget, knowing what we have to deal with and whether or not whatever we do with shuttles will also be part of that budget discussion by default, I believe, because things like that come up in our budget workshops. We go through every single line item in the budget department to department and discuss those. So I'm just trying not to have a discussion that's not going to be very fruitful because it comes before the incline and the thing is decided. Um, it again comes without an opportunity to do what I feel is adequate public outreach because of COVID. There's a lot of concerns I have. So I'm not necessarily opposed to discussing it in these in these timeframes. But if we have a separate agenda item, but we're not wrapping in all these other details, I think that is not necessarily the best use of our time either.
Your hand up.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify something. Are you calling on me?
Yeah, Julie, go ahead and just be quick with your clarification.
I I don't know if I heard this correctly, but then near the beginning of Susan's statement just now, I think she said something like, I don't know where Julie gets that idea that nobody wants the shuttle to go up to the incline. If that's what she thinks I said, and if that's what you all think I said, I want to clarify, I didn't mean to say that. I never meant to say that I've taken a poll and everybody agrees with this. I simply meant to say that I've never seen the shuttle issue raised by anyone from Colorado Springs in the context of the incline discussion. I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't want to go on record of people thinking that what Susan said I said is what I meant to say or what I said. I didn't I didn't mean to say that. That's all. Thank you.
And Counselor Wolf, my apologies, but I it seems like I've heard this more than once. So I'm glad that you clarified that tonight because the way that I've interpreted that more than once is we don't if you want to do the incline, you can walk from wherever. And I'm, you know, I'm just telling you that that is how I heard it. I'm glad that you clarified that. Thank you for doing that.
Well, yeah, I I do keep bringing it up and I do think it's unnecessary. So maybe you didn't hear me right the next time. I do think it's unnecessary. I'm speaking for myself. At the beginning of your statement, it sounded like you were characterizing my statement as being Julie Wolf has decided that no one on earth wants the incline to stay open. And I just wanted to clarify, I was not speaking for anyone other than myself, that I think if we're looking at really tough budget cut decisions and we have to decide if we're going to lay somebody off or if we're going to save 300 and something thousand dollars instead by canceling this one bus. So to me, that's the kind of discussion I want us to have about what makes sense here. But I never intended to suggest that I'm aware that no one on this planet wants the incline shuttle to continue. So that I just wanted that clarification.
I understand, and I think the video and audio record of this call will say that I didn't think you think the incline should never be open. So I just want to say.
Oh, no, I don't feel that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's let's move on. Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I don't think that we can. I I don't want to risk discussing this prematurely. The shuttles are in the context of much larger issues and if we discuss it independently of those larger issues, i.e. the mobility study and the incline, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. So I would just caution against doing that. I think we've got some more legwork to do and the budget, oh, by the way. So I just think we've got legwork to do before we can put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Echo that also. Okay. Good. All right. Let's go on to council correspondence. Judith.
Oh, excuse me, I have a motion. I want to know if there's a second or not before we go to council correspondence, if I may. Am I entitled to aren't I entitled to have make my motion and see if anybody wants to second it or not?
Okay, I guess I guess the point is, do we want to consider the shut the incline shuttle as a separate agenda item? Is that the point?
Yeah, that'll work.
No second. Motion fails. I think this can be discussed and I think this is appropriate to discuss in the context of the incline and the the master mobility, transportation master mobility plan. And those are coming up. Those will be there'll be a lot of work involved there. So I think we will hit the topic and we'll put it in context. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to council correspondence. Who would like to be next? Anybody? Mr. Bremner.
Yeah, I talked to Steve Smith, who lives down on Narrows Road underneath the bridge that goes across on Highway 24. And he talked about the Jake brakes being particularly bad this year. And I saw an email from Denise Howell earlier today talking about the Jake brakes. And apparently it's it's pretty pretty bad this year. And I and I did a little bit of research on the internet because I didn't even know what Jake brakes were. And I found out that some places in the in the country have made them illegal. So when I read that correspondence from Denise Howell, it had the correspondence from the State Patrol saying that they can't really measure the decibel levels and there's really or they can maybe they can measure the decibel levels, but there's no law that specifically states what the decibel levels would be if they're excessive. So to me, it seems like maybe we could make a law or an ordinance or something that prevents the trucks from using the Jake brakes on that bridge because there's a lot of houses down underneath that bridge and the noise, I think, is quite a it's troublesome for the people who live there. I I've lived in places like that before where a lot of highway noise. So I'm not sure if there's a way to address that or not.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mayor Protem.
Yeah, just I've had concerns raised in my ward as well about the brakes and I did submit it to staff to take a look at what possibilities were. And I know Denise and and staff for working at that and it's the email we got from them today. So thanks to staff for doing that. If I I would certainly be willing to act on any recommendations, but hopefully they can help resolve it at a lower level. Another issue that I've been getting lots of correspondence on is apparently at Kangaroo Campground, which is up Crystal Park Road, they have dammed up Sutherland Creek, which is weird. I I don't know why they're doing that, but staff is also looking into that. So we'll have more information on why Sutherland Creek is now completely dry in my ward because it's the water's being held upstream. So who knows? But thank you for for taking that on and hopefully we'll get some good answers on that. Thanks.
Do you have any comments? Hey, John?
No comment.
No comment. Okay. Counselor Woolbrook.
I don't have any correspondence that hasn't already been covered by other counselors. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't really have anything else either. So I think that concludes council correspondence. Okay, wait, I see. Okay, three hands. Denise, I think you were first.
That's okay. I can go last, so go ahead with everything else.
I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor, for the response to council correspondence. You're doing a great job with that and it's greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Julie?
Oh, this is a question for Jeff. Is it state law that would control the highways when the noise on the highways or I hate to see staff spend 50 hours if it's not within our jurisdiction to control the brakes on the highway. Do you happen to know off the top of your head? I know this is really like Trivial Pursuit.
You know, if it's not a road you control, you may not have jurisdiction over it, but we could also still work with CDOT. We could also still work with the Highway Patrol and we can certainly deal with our own streets as well. That's my quick off the cuff answer.
Thank you.
That's coming from Denise.
Jeff, I'll forward you the emails that I've received and I forwarded to council from CDOT and from State Patrol. And then maybe the direction of what we could do or not do and it may require us to encourage it at the state level for a law instead of local because of Highway 24.
Yeah, there was a new law that requires trucks to have certain types of mufflers that actually make the Jake brakes a lot less noisy. So, you know, they can enforce that, but then we can I'll take a look what you said. We'll get I'll get you some more information.
The decimal thing, so I'll show you that. The other thing I wanted to respond to is the Kangaroo Campground. It does look like they have authority to do that. I've done the research and it looks like that they do have the authority to do that dam at this time. It's part of their argue. I can't say the word all of a sudden because I can't look it up, but it's part of their process. So I will forward that to everybody. The other thing is I did reach out to Rhonda at the bulletin and ask her maybe to do an article about the Jake brakes and just to make awareness of the process and the laws that are currently in place so that our community can be aware of that, too.
And I think that concludes council correspondence. Leaving the last item to be adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion we adjourn.
The motion?
Second.
We have a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Unanimous. Okay, thank you all. You have a good evening. Bye bye.